Mission, 10th July, 2025. We would like to begin our meeting tonight with some opening remarks and that has fallen to Chris Sands and also the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. My comments are going to be in the form of a poem by local poet Stark Coolbrook. Don't know if you guys have one of these coming up, but I do. This is called "Family Reunion." Here our grandfathers built this park, hung swings, dug horseshoe pits. Here we played together, spent our summer days, and then were gone. Here we are, family, connected by blood, law, adoption, but long estranged. Here we try to reconcile our past with all those middle years of living other lives. Here is a place to begin, the food laid out on long tables, our children at play. Here we are strangers together as family again, learning what to forgive. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Thank you for helping with the pledge as well. First order of business is review and approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? And then the minutes from the 5th of June, 2025 meeting. Were there any additions or corrections to that?
That was a good meeting to miss. I read that and I was like, ooh.
Yeah.
It was long.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes and approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we accept the minutes of this meeting and approve the or approve the agenda of this meeting, except the minutes of the last meeting.
We have a, we have a motion and approval. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. This evening's meeting, we have six items on the agenda. Three of those are on the, what we call the consent agenda, and these are items that have met all of the requirements for approval, or they are a simple thing. One of those was an extension or a continuance to something that we have continued from a previous meeting. And because they have met all of those things, we, in most cases, just approve those as part of the consent agenda unless somebody has a concern and wants to speak on those. Those three items are the King Irrigation Full Pressurization Project, Conditional Use Permit, the Saddle Ridge Subdivision, and the Rose Hill Subdivision Second Amendment. Was there anybody here that had some information on those that they wanted to discuss? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I ask a quick question? Just on the continuance, how long did you want that for?
Yeah, that's why I was just asking him as well. So as an update for that subdivision, they did appeal to the fire district, fire appeals board, and that hearing was on the 2nd or 3rd of July?
I believe it was the 2nd.
I believe it was the 2nd. They had three days to issue a decision. I haven't read the decision, but Andrew can kind of update you. But essentially, they upheld the fire district's determination that they didn't meet the exception and will require a secondary ingress egress to that proposed 22-lot subdivision now. But yeah, so we're just waiting for additional information from them to move that forward. So I think another three months would be good. And there is a possibility they could also appeal it as well, that decision.
So we...
I was just going to ask if three was enough, that's all.
Yeah, and actually, I think the attorney's office does have some question about if it needs to come back here, if they wanted to appeal to fire appeal board's decision or not, but I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
I mean, ultimately, I think if we want to do three months, I think that would be fine. Ultimately, I think a lot of it's me and them, what they want to do. I think there's some other outstanding issues that will require a decision by the planning commission so that they can pursue their appeal rights if they want. Fire's just a piece of those, so at this point, we haven't heard back from them, so I'd say let's see what they want to do and we'll just go from there.
Is there a, is there a timeframe on an application?
Six months, right?
That's kind of what I was thinking, but maybe I just have that in my head for some reason.
No, if you consider temporary miner, mining extraction operation, I think we continue that for almost nine months to a year, so. But yeah, nothing in code that limits a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question when Chris is done. So, just kind of a general question involving the ag remainders. I don't know if staff can answer this or whatever. My question or confusion is, and I don't remember the total history on this Rose Hill, but, okay, so let's say that I, as an applicant, come in, I have six acres. I apply for an RU2, and I'm given three lots. But because of my confirmation of my lots, I might have a half acre, a three-quarter acre, and an acre. The total of my lots equal less than three acres, so I put the other three acres in an ag remainder. Can I come back later and get another lot out of that ag remainder if I've already utilized my three lots?
I don't think it would, yeah, you can't. And I don't think you could have it, three lots and an ag remainder. Those six acres would have to be divided between the three.
The ag remainder would be tied to one of them, or?
Ag remainder has to be at least five acres to meet the Green Belt Status and Farmland Assessment Act, so, I mean, theoretically, if it were six acres, they could do three half-acre lots and have, well, no, that's still less. So, yeah, you wouldn't really be able to in that scenario.
First lot.
Yeah.
It just seems unlike Smithfield and some of these that we've observed. We've approved them with an ag remainder, but then it appears that there's more homes built on them than we originally approved, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. With the Smithfield one, they did do the original subdivision under the A-10 zone. I believe it may have even been in 1970, but then they came back and rezoned the entire subdivision to give them that extra density. But if you max out your density with the number of lots and still have enough for an ag remainder, yeah, you can't rezone that ag remainder to another higher density or...
Could you, you could change the boundaries like to, we've done that where we've taken one lot that was maybe an acre today and borrowed from the ag remainder to make it a bigger lot, but we can't create, once an ag remainder's in place, we can't create another separate lot with that?
Not unless, they can if they still have density.
If they got the lots from the original development.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's the situation here with the Rose Hills.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thanks for that clarification.
So I would make a motion that we approve the consent items with item number two, the continuance for up to three months.
I'd second it.
We have a motion in a second. Who wants to take the second? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're on to our regular agenda items. We have three of those. We'll begin with the GGUSA Hiram LLC CUP. WXYZ. Connor, would you help us with that?
All right, so here's the site. It's a little bit north of Hiram. So essentially, it's a request to install a renewable natural gas facility. Basically, the facility will upgrade biogas that's produced by JBS and basically distributed via an Enbridge metering station and pumping station. All of the parcels are legal. The adjacent uses is mainly a mix of industrial and residential to the south and usually or normally agriculture to the north. The applicant, in terms of plans, will have to provide some updated plans to kind of meet the conditions of public works. And part of that, they also have to, once these plans are submitted and finalized, have to provide another written approval from JBS and Enbridge. Past that, in terms of structures, there'll be three equipment skids, control room, storage connects, a flare, and porta potty. Basically, the hours of operation, it's capable of 24/7 remote operation, but onsite, they'll have a technician from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on weekdays with occasional visits on weekends and holidays if needed. Silence will be pretty limited, just what's required by federal, state, and county code. In terms of waste, hazardous waste will be disposed of by a professional company, and then standard waste will be disposed of via just normal trash pickup. In terms of stormwater, basically, they'll have to provide a report. They'll have to do a maintenance agreement because there's a long-term stormwater structure on the site. Then, once they start construction, they'll have to do a land disturbance permit. In terms of roads, the main access road they have is 1200 West. It provides access to JBS agricultural lands and services through access from Hiram to Nibley. It experiences quite a bit of truck traffic just because JBS is right there. It has a minimum access spacing of 350 feet for a public and private road and 200 feet for commercial, residential, or farm accesses. It's maintained by the county year-round, is currently 24 feet wide, has a 99-foot right of way, three-to-four-foot paved shoulder, a two-foot gravel shoulder, a variable clear zone, and is paved. It's considered substandard as to gravel shoulder and clear zone. In terms of conditions, they'll have to dedicate right of way along the frontage and also provide at least a four-foot gravel shoulder and meet clear zone requirements. Any new driveway, the new driveway will have to meet county standards, and any costs accrued by the engineering division in terms of review or inspections will have to be paid by the applicant. In terms of parking, they're exempt just because of their use type. In terms of services, the fire district didn't have any comments, but will review any zoning clearances that'll be submitted, so the equipment skids, the control room, anything like that. Solid waste disposal is responsibility of the applicant. In terms of detrimental effects, air quality is the one that we tagged. Basically, they'll have to use best management practices during construction. There is a wildfire hazard present on the property, so they'll have to prepare a fire protection report for approval by the fire district. And then, notice was posted to three public places and mailed to all property owners within 300 feet on June 27th. The notice was posted to the ETOP Public Notice Website on June 30th, and the agenda was posted to the county website on June 27th, and at this time, there's no public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for that update. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Could you, could you identify that fire one more time?
Yeah, so basically, there's wildfire hazard if you turn on sensitive lands here.
Was that on a number or just additional information?
That's just additional information. That should be, actually, I can pull up this.
It was the last condition, wasn't it?
It was one of the last conditions. It's right above the noticing section.
Nineteen, it looked like.
But there's no detail in the, in the report above?
Not necessarily. Sorry, I'm kind of confused by your question.
Well, it's just, it's just re-identifying that. So it's identified as a wildfire?
Had an area zone, yeah.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
In the explanations.
The I.
Which, yeah, that's surprising.
Is that, does that come from, from just a zone then that has been identified?
Basically, I guarantee fire could probably describe this better. My understanding, they use the fire risk index, which assigns a value to certain amounts of area. It's like a meter by a meter, something like that. So because of where they're at, that's just a very high value, and so that's why I got called out.
The middle of alfalfa fields.
Really interesting.
It looks like it's right on the edge of what...
And that's...
Yeah, yes, it's showing.
Yeah.
That one seemed...
Thanks for clarifying that. It caught me, it caught me off on that.
Yeah, I was surprised.
Okay.
Other question?
That was the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
It seemed a strange place for wildfire risk.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to speak to this?
Sure.
Say anything about it? It's up to you.
Yeah, I'm, it's...
If you do want to speak, please come up to the, to the microphone here and state your name for the record.
Sure.
Hi, Connor. Hi, I'm Casey Murakami, project manager for Green Gas USA. You hit all the highlights. That's essentially what we're doing. We're partnering with JBS. We're going to lease an acre of land adjacent to their operations, kind of where their trucks come in and out right there. And we're going to upgrade the biogas through a gas upgrading system and get it to pipeline quality methane and inject it directly into the pipeline. And then, we brought an Enbridge representative here as well in case there was any questions on the utility side.
So is this, is this a filtration and pressurization process?
You can think of it that way. It's more of a gas splitting process, so the biogas that comes off of their wastewater lagoons is comprised of essentially 70% methane and then 30% CO2, small trace amounts of H2S.
So you're pulling, stripping that off then?
Yeah, so we're taking that 70% through a pressure swing absorption system, which is basically the media beds that goes from high to low pressure and separates those molecules, the CH4 methane molecules. And so, we have 99.9% pure methane that goes to the pipeline. That's renewable natural gas that can be for net neutrality goals that people buy.
Okay.
On the, so they're already collecting and utilizing the...
They're having it go straight to their boilers. Right.
Yeah.
So they're taking it, and they do, they run it through a quick moisture knockout, essentially, but they're not separating out that pure methane. So there will be some that still routes to them as, it's compliant with their air permit. But what we're essentially doing is cleaning it up and sending it straight to pipeline and getting the renewable attribute for it.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not going to replace the existing system necessarily, but it's going to take what normally would have...
What normally would go there and go into a pipeline.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Got it. Thanks.
Biogas has the tendency to be kind of dirty and has silicates and things in it.
Yeah, it's not great for their compressors and their systems, yeah.
Damages.
And it's not, their air permit too, right? That's more sulfides that they have to permit for on their air permit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, applicant? This is not a, a public, a public comment, but is there anybody here in the, here that would like to speak to this proposal? No? Okay. Commissioners, what do we want to do on the GGUSA Hiram LLC CUP?
Would make a motion to approve it with the 19 conditions and three conclusions.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is a discussion on the Honey Solar Code Amendment. We had a combined county council and planning commission meeting here two weeks ago, something like that, and had a good discussion on, on this one.
Yeah, the only real changes from that are there were some steps that were added, basically. It's kind of like we were directed, basically, it's not just small scale, like one house to several hundred acres. Now, there's a couple of different...
Few different ones.
Yeah, so you basically do a smaller scale, which is about an acre to five acres.
Do we even want this?
It's about five acres and 20. So there's a bit of a step in that. We also did specify, like, define concentrated solar. And then, if we come down to how it'd be modifying 1709, basically, the smaller scale ones would just be conditional use permits in all zones aside from FR40 and resort recreation. And then, utility facility concentrated solar would just be outright not permitted, just so we can kind of close that loophole almost, just make sure nobody could come in with one of those kind of facilities. But past that, there's nothing that's really too different. Basically, just that. We went with acres in terms of how to kind of define these, just because once you start dealing with power, it gets a bit weird. So, these are really any different, let's assume that you have a one-acre site that impacts land versus, that produces one megawatt versus one that produces 20 megawatts, not really. It just kind of depends. So we just went with acres in terms of how to kind of go about defining the size on those ones.
So one question I have on that, Connor. Under the, the different uses, right, the 5630, 40, 50?
Yes.
So the ones that Val J had a lot of questions about, right, is these farmers put in more pivots and they do the pivot corners to power their, their operation essentially. Would that still fall into the 5640 if they were in between that five and 20 acres, even though it's a sole, they're literally providing for themselves? Because this talks about for multiple customers and participation in net metering. Is there, is there a breakout if, you know, we don't have anyone doing it currently. I just wonder if we're going to make something really hard for a farmer that's wanting to run his systems. Val J just looked at some other ones in the state that are doing that, but...
So individuals, and just kind of add individuals to that, basically?
Yeah.
There's not necessarily anything wrong with that. It's just, if you want that to be added, we can...
Well, yeah, I just wonder, yeah, I just wonder where it would fit. I, that's what I was more asking, if, which, which area would it fit in?
Would that be triggered by the, the parcel size, or in the past with a, with a public utility overlay, we've been able to make that, to, to put that overlay on, not on the entire parcel, right? Seems like we did that on, on some of, some that we've done in the past, where it doesn't have to be the entire parcel. So you could have somebody with, you know, a section of ground, 600 acres, but they only want to take the pivot corner to do this. Could you put that, could you put that overlay only on the area that's impacted by the, by the solar operation?
Theoretically, it'd almost be kind of like a mineral extraction operation, where you could have a parcel, in theory, right? So you have just the mine field, let's assume there's no overlay. So that doesn't take up the entire parcel, it's just part of the conditional use permit itself. So in this case, you would have, let's say, 10 parcels that are involved in the operation. It'd all just be tied to the same project, basically.
But you could, but, but a farmer could stay under the, under the size, size requirement where, where a lot of the other requirements will fall into place?
Yeah, and we have done that with different CUPs. If it, the facility proposed is just operating on a portion of it, the legal description they'll provide for us would just be the bounds of the CUP.
Or we've had like a transmission tower or something like that.
Telecommunication facilities, do that a lot with the public infrastructure overlay. But we can also kind of customize that with a conditional use permit, if it's just a portion of the property and not the entire thing, so. It's just, condition of approval would be that they would need to provide that legal description for the area being used as part of that facility.
I have a question. In regards to the community facility, I'm sorry, utility facility, community solar scale, so 5640 in the 1709-030 table? So what's, what's conditional, what's not permitted, right, for those uses? It didn't make sense to me to, at the community solar, to have those as conditional uses in RU2 and RU5. I couldn't think of a reason of why that would be necessary, but maybe there's a good explanation or reason?
There's not. It was just kind of throwing it on there just to see if you want that to be not permitted, that makes plenty of sense to me. I was just kind of seeing how the commission...
Retain it as the small-scale solar. I'm just trying to think of a situation where...
Yeah, if you were over five acres, you know, the only place I could see it is if you had like a, which we don't approve, we don't approve them yet. Yeah, if you had a 10-acre ag remainder in a RU2 subdivision and they wanted to do six acres of a solar panel, I don't see it happening, but that would be the only place it would ever, most of them are going to be small if they're in the RU2 anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only...
Yeah, but do we, do we want it? I guarantee you, if we allow it, it will come. So, I mean, we had a lot, if you don't mind, let me finish.
What should we talk about?
We, we, we've talked about the, the home, the multifamily home out in Wellsville already. None of them people bought them lots and moved in there knowing that that was coming. So why would you want to build your house and have a solar farm move next to it on the two acres?
Well, I'm almost wondering if we don't, if we exclude the RU2, because we're trying to keep the RU2 next to a municipality, which is going to annex it, and then the municipality would want to control that, I would think.
Mm-hmm.
So, I see what Chris is saying.
My thought was to make those, change those to an N for RU2 and RU5.
And I would agree with you, because hopefully, the RU2 turns into a municipality before long, and then they'd want to control it.
Tell them they can't do it because they want to produce all the power and sell it to them.
Exactly, so. So that's a good point from Chris on that.
On the 5640.
Right.
So that's...
Sound okay with you guys too?
Well...
Makes sense?
My question after your, at the same time as yours, I just didn't realize yours was going to be the same, is the note below that, and I was actually a little confused with Jason's question. So I, at first, was wondering if, when we talk about a small corner on a pivot, if you would first have to zone that RU2 or RU3 or 5A in order to be a smaller scale, but that, that note two, I guess that's just basically back in the 5630, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, would we be okay if we agree as a group to, under 10, no?
That makes sense, yeah.
For, for the utility ones, I think the small-scale solar would still be okay in those zones, but, so the 5630? Because Chris was just talking about the 5640, right, the bigger ones?
Yeah.
The, the community solar ones, but the small-scale...
Where's our definition of small scale?
Under five acres.
It's just right at the top.
Right there. I would still be personally opposed to that under R10 or A10, because the same principle, you go build a nice place or move into residential neighborhood, just take that Wellsville, what if three of them homes would have been built instead of the party house or...
They, they put in a...
All the family deals, they'd have put in a five or two-acre... I just don't, I don't think that's fair to the people. It's already there. That's only my thoughts. Even the subdivision, I don't know if any of you are here for the Wellsville subdivision, but, I mean, there again, how many homes have you got out there? And if somebody comes in and buys that on their two, two acre deal, and even small scale, I mean, we're fine with putting them on your home, and, and I don't know if we could even, or if we have definition, you know, there's a few homes that have chosen to go solar for their home alone, but they're not contributing back. I don't have a problem with that, but when you're trying to put it back in the main system, is that something we want?
Yeah, this is really like, bigger than an acre, but less than five acres.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah, definitely more than just personal use.
I'll, I'll contribute my, my opinion. I have some strong opinions on this. I visited one of these sites on the way back from Moab today, and, and I personally think this, this should probably be, given the, the scale and the impact of, of these larger solar facilities, I think they should be in industrial. I, I think it's, you know, that's the, if we put it as a CUP in these, it's shall approve, and we, all we can do is put conditions on it. I, I feel pretty strongly that, you know, if we're, if we're talking something that, you know, the impact on this is bigger, I mean, the proposal that we've, that we've heard about, 600 acres, that's probably the biggest impact of any proposal that, that this commission has heard in the years that Chris and I have been in here, which is a long time. And, and it's...
There may be a gravel pit or two that runs right up there, but anyway, your point will take it, yeah.
But the point, right, is, is, you know, we, we've had a lot of heartburn over storage units and gravel pits and...
The hell is skiing, it's pretty big.
And, and things like that, but to me, you know, looking at the facilities that I've seen around the, around the state, these have a bigger impact than, you know, the only thing would be like a gravel pit, right, where we're actually extracting that, but these impact every square inch of the, of the parcel, and, and it's commercial production of electricity. To me, it fits in a commercial or industrial zone, and that gives us the opportunity to look at it from a rezone first.
So with yours, you're saying any size?
I would, I would say, I would say the large scale.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I had to say.
Over the 20 acres.
I think the small scale is, is something that, that could make sense, you know, because, yeah, pivot corner, does that, what kind of impact? Well, there's impact there, but compared to something that we're, you know, we're talking 600-plus acres, that you'll be able to see from every corner of the valley and watch it glow in the, in the morning or in the, or in, in the evening, that's a big impact. And, and to me, having it in, in industrial or commercial gives us the opportunity to look at it and say, no, we don't want to rezone that particular area versus having, having it just as a, as a CUP in A10, and you can stick it anywhere.
So, I guess what they're showing in the use table is that the commercial scale stuff is only conditional in public infrastructure zone, so it's not permitted in any other zone.
And, and I guess that's my, that's my take on it, is I think it falls better in a, in a commercial...
Taken out of the public infrastructure overlay.
Out of the public infrastructure overlay.
Only in industrial.
Because it's not, you know, and what we've used in, you know, public infrastructure, that's putting in a communications tower, that's putting in a, a pipeline or, or something like that. This, in my estimation, looks an awful lot more like a full industrial or a commercial operation than it, than it's simply a, you know, well, and, and let me just re... Than it, than it's simply a, you know, well, and, and let me just re- rephrase it a little bit. If we had somebody come in and propose a hydroelectric facility or a, or a gas turbine generation facility. What, what zone would we wanna stick that in? Would we stick it in A ten under public infrastructure?
We kinda discussed that, that, like with the pipelines.
I, I don't think this, this body would, would look at a, a gas turbine generation facility and say, yeah, we'll stick it in public infrastructure and, and just have a CUP around it. I, I think we would lean more towards.
Rezone.
Rezone to an industrial. And, you know, if we're talking megawatts, you know, we're talking twenty or fifty mega, what, what was it? Was it a hundred megawatts? It was, it was, it was giant. You know, Cutler Dam's like a ten megawatt facility. You know, that's kinda the scale that we're, that we're talking. In my mind, there's, there's not a ton of difference. And if there is, it's, it's just swapping what the impacts are. And, and to a, to a large extent, a gas turbine's gonna have less visual impact, you know, you're certainly gonna have the air, the air quality issues from that, but you're not. But, but the overall impact, in my mind, is, is greater with, with these big solar farms. If my drone would've worked today, I would've had you some nice drone footage of, of this.
I've driven by a few of them.
Driven by Plymouth, you know, just this last weekend, yeah.
I was actually looking, prior to coming, I had just glanced the news, I think it was KSL. KSL had a shot earlier, I can't locate it now, of one of the fields. But it actually brought up another question, cuz I don't remember, it might've been you Nate, that was mentioned, the concern with fire hazard. And they, the applicant had reassured us that they were gonna put the sterile, which brought up another concern, what happens thirty years later when you turn it back into farmland? And now you want something to grow, but I definitely don't think it's in anybody's best interest to allow vegetation. Cuz that photo that was on KSL showed dead, burned down grass this high, which would just go like that if it caught fire. And then you've got the battery problems and everything else that we addressed, so. I don't understand how they could allow that or why they would even want that vegetation with that potential problem.
Yeah, and I think their proposal was to plant native grasses there and just keep them mowed. They do, they weren't gonna do the sterilant on theirs, and that was one of the, one is, can you get anything to grow after you've built all that? You know how.
Without irrigation, it won't.
Get stuff to dry, grow on dry land out there. And then, yeah, then do weed control and fire control by keeping it mowed short enough so you don't have a fire risk under all those panels, so.
So, to my point, it's, it's, you know, I, I think there are, there, there are significant, significant challenges to this or significant impacts. To the point where I would, I would feel much more comfortable if we had the ability to look at a site and say, does it make sense to rezone this? Versus just what kind of, what kinda conditions can we put on it, cuz it's shall approve.
Yeah.
And, and so that's.
So, would you, so, right now, the other scales, the small scale and the community solar scale are listed as conditional and the commercial and the industrial. And so your recommendation would be to also make them conditional in the commercial, solar and battery storage categories too, right? So conditional.
Just move the two Cs over two columns.
There, and make this a no over on the public infrastructure?
Yeah, I would put it into the, to the industrials or commercial, not have it.
How though would you protect that so that it wasn't abused, but yet allowed on a pivot corner? It's gonna be A ten.
And that's why, that's why I was looking at the large scale.
Yeah, they, they'd still be okay, cuz they, they're under the fifty-six thirty or forty, so they're the smaller ones. They would stay as conditional use, under A ten even. And so they would just have to come in.
So, are you guys comfortable though, can we do something to eliminate? No smaller than A ten.
Yeah, I think the RU twos and RU fives.
I think we already agreed on that, right?
If something comes up a decade from now where it makes sense, we can revise this.
We can readdress that.
But it may never come up, and so we don't have to worry about it, take it out for now until it does come up. And then I like your idea of moving the other two, those bigger ones, not, not allowed in the public infrastructure and only allowed under industrial. Cuz then, yeah, then we've got a rezone, and that's what we talked about at the meeting with the, with the county council is, you know, we should have an ordinance in place for these. But we can still deny them. And, and the rezone gives you a lot more denial flexibility, because you can do that just based on public opinion. You know, the county. Yeah, the conditional use, you shall approve it. The, the rezone, if the county council says the public doesn't want it, we're gonna not rezone it, that's end of story, and that, that holds up in court.
Isn't it the same though for public infrastructure, or not?
And, and, and yeah, probably, it probably would be. Whereas as far as, it's a rezone. I just, yeah. Public infrastructure, infrastructure seems squishy to me.
Where's an example, Jason?
Wha- what's that?
Where's an example, I'm having a hard time.
Of a public infrastructure?
Picture in the public.
We've used those for the communication towers, cell towers, we used to have a bunch of them, but we don't see those much anymore.
Yeah, I think the last one we did, we might've, we did one at Beaver Mountain, right, for their new cell tower? And that one out in Mount Sterling, might be the most recent ones I can think of, but they're like one acre, half an acre.
Like the, the radio towers out in Wellsville, that was, that was public infrastructure, wasn't it, I think? Things, things like that, to me, this seems more like a straight up industrial use.
My question on that front is, let's assume we put it into industrial, right, let's say you have six hundred acres. Three hundred acres are used for the solar farm, what would prevent someone from just abusing the industrial part of that?
And, and, and that's a, a really good point, but the point is that we take it more seriously when we, when we rezone something to industrial.
At least you get a look at it versus if you have a CUP, there isn't much looking at it. It's done.
What, and this is, at this point, are you looking for us to take action tonight on this?
No, this is just a discussion.
Okay.
We'll probably ask next meeting, just based on, we're planning on asking.
And then at that point, it's a recommendation to the council, correct?
So based on what we discussed, you're gonna eliminate the Cs, the four Cs under R two, RU two and RU five?
Yeah, so seventeen oh nine is gonna change to N under RU two, RU five for both the smaller scale ones. Then N for PI, and then C in industrial for the commercial scale ones and the battery storage. Is that correct?
That's how I understand it.
I was gonna say, I guess you could leave it in both, right, industrial and in public infrastructure, and see what the county council. Like, or, or maybe get their input, or, or you can tell them what, when we switched it, I guess, and they can maybe see, but I.
That's probably the discussion to have is.
Yeah, if we do the public infrastructure, it does give us more control if it is a big one. But, but is there a way, and maybe this is a question for you legally, right, if you do that, can you still put conditions on a rezone like that of, of what's being requested to be done there, or are you done at that point once it's zoned to that?
Once it's zoned and it's. Once it's laid of whatever the use is.
That, that's maybe a, a counter argument would be that.
You have more control of this public infrastructure.
Yes, yes.
Less things are allowed.
There's only, there's less uses allowed in public infrastructure than under industrial, presumably.
Yeah.
And so, and so after the life of the solar, then what? You know, that, that land is still industrial, so it'll continue to be in industrial use, whereas if it's no longer a public.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, you know.
Does it revert back?
To A ten.
Is there any way that we can put into, so say somebody comes in for a rezone specifically tailored to a solar farm. They get the industrial, and then they move forward with the solar farm. Could we tie anything into that, that once the solar farm is over? That reverts back to A ten, or it's gotta be reevaluated?
See, that's where I wanted to go, cuz once you rezone it and, and the life of the solar thing's gone, then what have we got out there?
And all the farmers he's leasing it from are dead.
Yeah, so.
And now it's, and now it's industrial, it's worth a lot more money.
Jason will have a whole bunch of them shops that he gets scared of every time he talks about that stuff.
Maybe pump public infrastructure where it still requires the rezone, maybe that does make more sense with thinking some of those. It could go either way. Let's, let's do a new call category, industrial, solar.
Argument to, to, to make us take it seriously.
That's not a bad idea.
It's own category, industrial, solar. All right, then it, then it only has one use.
And it, and it has, it has a lifetime of the solar.
Yeah.
See, we need to look at that because.
We can make a whole new category, that's a lot more work.
We just created a problem for somebody down in planning and zoning forty years from now when that solar thing goes out.
In all honesty, and I don't know what you guys' feelings were, and we don't even need to discuss it. But I gathered that that gravel pit on Crow Mountain, if he'd have come in just with the mineral extraction. We know the first time it didn't fly because of the wanting to use the whole parcel. And I don't know what you guys just thought were on the second time, but may I submit that you may have been more prone to approve it with just the mineral extraction than with an industrial overlay.
And that's really, I think that's really my point, right, is, is, is we take it more seriously.
And that's not dead yet either, so.
Well, it's still gotta go before you guys, but that might even be something in general that we look at, just with that whole classification. Because, I mean, I think that pet crematorium in Richmond had to be industrial in order for them to get that. But what happens when them people sell the house, and the next guy don't wanna do pet crematorium, but now, now he's got all the industrial options that he could put on that piece.
Well, the piece I, the thing I look at, there's not many things that go industrial that cannot revert back to agricultural such as this solar, if it can.
Yeah, it, it's about the only one that really.
Yes, so I agree with you when we say we almost need a new category so that it protects it. Cuz if we're going out there into Cash Junction or wherever he wants to put this, not really where he wants the industrial anyhow. Unless he wants to tie into a railroad, so.
Or inland port, maybe.
Or inland port, yes.
But, six hundred acres becoming an industrial thing out there, but is garbage generated that too?
I think the landfill.
The garbage landfill? Re- remember that, that application couple of months ago was right out in that area.
Transfer facility, transfer facility, it's under industrial.
Isn't that industrial?
Yeah.
Yes.
So you, there you go, right there, we already turned one down that we did.
Was that industrial, or was that?
I think it was.
Was that public infrastructure?
Yeah, that would've been like ten feet in mud and maybe, maybe.
It was, it was bad location, clay.
Yeah, um, it was, yeah.
Clean slate.
Was it industrial?
Clean slate.
I'm very sure it was industrial, so there's an example right there, we didn't want that there. But yet you, you take it across the street and put it industrial, now they can do it.
Yeah, this one needs to be vetted more, I think, cuz with the scope of a solar thing, and it's a commercial, you're looking at gobs of land, gobs of acres, which down the road.
That was like twelve hundred acres though, not six, it's, it's big.
Huge, and then, do we really want that to be industrial forever?
These solars could end up anywhere, but we definitely know that that nineteen hundred north from North Logan to Petersburg, what transmission line to Beaver is their target location, cuz they ain't gotta ship it too far to.
They cut all the subsidies, none of them might do it anyways, but. With all the subsidies being cut, they, they might all leave anyways for now, but they'll be back.
And, and I will just bring up that point, that I think one thing that needs to be in there is, is bonding, I know there's, we talked about that, but just for, I mean, we, we have gravel pits, have to put in a reclamation bond. Same thing should happen for, for solar facilities.
He's talking about year fifteen, when they would bond. How do you feel about that, would you care in particular, yes, no?
We've had him fifteen years, and he has approved that that's gonna be successful for fifteen years.
They're gone by fifteen years.
I don't agree with that, I think the bond needs to start now.
Yeah.
Maybe it can be incremental, right, if, if he's, if he's phasing his thing, but yeah, I, I agree if. If you wait till that long and if something happens with, with the, with the subsidies, with solar, with the, with the rates, right? They go out of business after seven, and they just walk away of all their equipment, you got nothing.
Well, you gotta be approved to get a bond. And, and you don't even know if that entity can get a bond fifteen years from now, if it's even the same entity you started with.
Yeah, I think the bond needs to be way closer.
And tied to the whole project all along, cuz it protects the county if they close at seven.
Yep.
What, was his point with that timeframe that it would take that long for them to have all the improvements in place?
That was my understanding, yeah.
Yeah.
It seems like there could be an incremental. Incremental as they build out, then they have to bond.
Something at the start, something at the five, ten, fifteen year mark, it's all the way fully funded.
Prior to the expansion, the bond is in place for that expansion.
Yeah, there could be something in there.
Is it Beaver? Millard County, one of the two, I mean, they have an abandoned site out there, some technology that didn't work, and there, there's a giant lawsuit around, around that.
Who's gonna clean it up?
Who's gonna, who's gonna clean up the mess, and so.
Taxpayer usually always gets it.
Yeah, okay, is that enough discussion on that item? You got what you need to move forward?
Thank you.
We'll make, we'll make the final call on that next month. As we think about it more.
Item number six, discussion on short term rentals.
Got interest, you guys? You just was lucky.
Guys were here just for. Being good, good citizens.
Free entertainment.
Yeah.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to, but we're preached every year here.
It's approved.
It's approved, you're approved.
We went so fast over that one, didn't we, see?
That's already been approved.
They're like, they're like.
Rose Hill, that was the.
That was one of the consent, we, we did those three items right at first, that was one of those three consent items. Yep, sorry, we should've made that more clear so you didn't have to listen to us the rest of the night, we just thought you really enjoyed it.
I can't say anything about it.
Not at this point, he, he asked if anyone was here to speak on it, yeah.
Seth Maryland's sub debate, I never heard that brought up.
Yeah, it was the Rose Hill was talked about on there for the three of them, so it's already passed. So, sorry about that. Sorry about that, but we, we discussed for a minute.
It meets all the requirements.
Makes the requirements, so you're, you're done.
We couldn't deny it essentially, it, it met everything in the county rules already, it was already.
For housing, it's just where there's tape in the water, you know, the, the outlet to that canal has went down eight to ten inches since they've allowed everything west of Highway twenty-three. And the more houses, the lower that water goes, because they're in the aqua fur, the canal, you know. That's a spring's all that come up. And that, that's only, you know, up, have houses, but it, whether they had to do a study to go down a different aqua fur or, you know, deeper wells or pull off some other, some other deal, that's. But like I said, just what housing up in Maple Rising is lowered that on eight, eight to ten inches, I can verify that. And I'm afraid the more, you know, the farther the people away, men, eleven mile canal, you know, it just affects the men.
Thank you, appreciate your input.
This much interest in the short term rental?
I thought I gave everybody an opportunity, didn't I?
To me, you, you described it just fine.
Okay.
Yes, so, short term rentals, you'll recall about nine months ago, last fall, this was brought up. It had been written by the previous director, county attorney's office had worked on it. And then, yeah, it just kinda got dropped with everything else going on. But there was some interest in that joint workshop to revisit this. And kind of helped to address some of the issues that we're having with short term rentals, as there's nothing in code that permits it or regulates it at this point. So, in conjunction with that, I have done a little cleanup, so there's additional definitions in that. But we'll just start with the short term rental stuff, and then I can head back to some of the other cleanup items I'm recommending. So, short term rentals means a residential unit, oh, can you scroll down to short term rental? Oh, right, you gave me the mouse to do this. Okay, yeah, so just kind of briefly going through this, it means a residential unit or any portion of a residential unit that the owner of record or the leasie of the residential unit offers for occupancy for fewer than thirty consecutive days. And then there are additional limitations and requirements, limited to overnight stays and associated activities for only the number of people for the maximum, maximum occupancy of the structure. We don't have anything that calls that out yet, I believe that.
Can I ask that?
Yeah.
Can I ask that? Are you doing that by bedrooms, septic tank, or water right?
Yeah, so I don't think we can get a one, one rule fits all, so I think that's where the conditional use permit comes in, then we'll be able to evaluate that based on the individual unit.
And we look at that because like Bear Lake is looking now, if you build a certain size and you're saying you're gonna rent it. Boom, your septic tank has gotta double. Because you're.
We might need to talk to the health department, see what their, their thoughts are on.
Exactly. Cause Bear Lake is saying you go above that, your septic tank's gotta go bigger, because part of what we talked about on the moratorium on subdivision is. Making sure we're watching the groundwater contamination with septic tanks in it, so.
And I, and I think that was some of our discussion at that joint meeting, is having that size threshold, right, if there's six or eight people or less. Right, those issues probably aren't gonna come up and, and the conditional use permit may not be required, but if you're over that. Then it makes more sense, cause you, you need a lot more evaluation for water, for sewer, for, for.
And you've stepped out, and you've stepped out of what is a residential use, if, just like Brady said, you move into the neighborhood and then boom, here comes this.
So maybe it's not in there yet, but having that, having that scale of where, where those requirements kick in.
We need to have that in it.
Probably makes, cause if, if there's one.
You think that'd be tied to fire occupancy?
There's one out there by me, it like sleeps two people, right, so.
Yeah, that's not a.
And, and they use a composting toilet, there's no septic, there's no water, there's nothing out there, like. That, that one doesn't make sense for a CUP. It's good to have the, a, a business license and the fire inspector go check it to make sure. Uh, it, it meets those things, but I think a conditional use permit for something like that seems excessive.
Yeah, I'd agree.
But for these other ones, and the other ones are the ones that are having the problems with.
Could I, could I bring up just the, the problems that we've had have been? I mean, really with one facility, right?
It wasn't one other one, but I don't think it rents anymore.
But I, I, I was giving this more thought and I thought if we took. The overnight stay out of this, would it change anything?
Meaning the thirty consecutive days or what?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, i- is if there was not an overnight stay, would we still have the problem with that facility out there?
Yes.
We'd still have the problem, right?
Parking?
Because if they're, if they're doing wedding, if they're doing wedding receptions, they're doing family reunions or, or whatever, i- i- if there's no overnight stay. It's still the same thing, and, and so, as I was thinking of, I'm like. I don't thi- and I'm not saying we don't, we don't look close at, at short-term rentals. But I think it's a recreational facility problem that we really have there and not a short-term rental problem that we have.
It's a good way to look at it.
Because I think it's, I think it's the event.
That's causing the problems.
Is where the problem is, right? But then, where do we?
I think some of them just have big, I mean, it's, it is an overnight stay, but there's just forty people that come and stay overnight and party all night, but they do have the weddings out there.
The vast majority of them, if, I, I mean, probably all of us or most of us h- here have gone to some city on vacation and we rent somebody's house for. For an evening, and if you're like me, you roll in at, you roll in at midnight. And you sleep for a few hours and then you're gone somewhere else and there's, the impact on the community is really miniscule. I think the vast majority of these.
That's what they are.
There's not a, there's not an issue, but the, the real issue that I think that we've seen is involving the recreational facility. Use of, of these facilities, it's the. The vehicle to use that is renting it as a, as a short-term rental. And, and anyway, so that, that's kind of my, my thought on it is, i- is maybe it's, maybe it's more of an enforcement issue. On the recreational facility, because if it changes, i- if the facility out there. Has to get a conditional use permit for a recreational facility to be able to have wedding receptions and family reunions and, and those types of things. Well, that probably, you know, changes the whole.
Yeah, and that's actually the second sentence of that same part. Other events, including but not limited to weddings. Uh, would not be permitted unless they went through the proper permitting to get a recreational facility.
So, so proper permitting, or i- is that saying a conditional use permit for a recreational facility?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
J- Jason, I just have one question or concern with your thought there. I agree with it for the most part. But if you just got one family, no matter, I, I've experienced a similar situation, get there late and get out of there, I mean, basically just.
No impact really, you know, besides.
But I can see one family stopping, but if you got five families stopping.
Agreed.
Now we have a safety issue.
Agreed.
And so, because of that, and because we know it's gonna happen, I think we still gotta have some numbers there. And we still gotta have.
And, and, and that's why I said, I, I still think we ought to take a close look at it, but I think, I think. The vast majority of these are pretty, you know, if they got a business license and a fire inspection. And, and they're pay, and they're paying their transient room tax and, to me, it doesn't, doesn't need to go through a lo- a huge amount of regulation for that. But look, to your point, you've gotta make a scale to it.
Yeah.
We need to make a scale because you need to, it's the resident that moves in and isn't expecting that to become a recreation or a short-term rental, so. Somehow we need to learn that. I like the business licensing, which maybe it's the business license that we look at that, can we classify? Business either on rental or on recreation, or slash both.
Yeah, I think on this, at least this one, they're, they're gonna be required for a business license, and whatever size they are, they'd be required to do that.
So.
And that, that's, that's what triggers.
CUP really should, for sure should be around the recreational facility, right, if you're, if you're hosting events.
Those ones that have five families staying there that. It, it's still not maybe a recreational thing, but there's, they could still cause a nuisance.
Safety.
Yeah, well, or even.
Or nuisance.
Or even, yeah, you got, you got, you know, thirty people staying overnight in a house next door to you, and it used to be a, of. Five fam- you know, five member family lived there, that can be.
But if you, if you take, i- if you take the overnight stay, the, the app or whatever, the way we reserve this out of it. And just say, hey, I've got an old barn out here and you, and you can give me a call and rent it out to have your wedding reception or, um, or, or your event. We still have the same issue, it's just.
Let me introduce something there. We got a person who is avoiding the business license because they say it's an educational gathering. And so it's not a recreational. But.
What are they teaching?
Yes. Art, from a, from a county standpoint, it's the safety issue that that facility that they're in hasn't been inspected or for anything else, if some.
We put a hundred and fifty people in an old barn and it catches on fire.
We got trouble.
We got, we got trouble.
Yeah, I'm gonna call it a religious gathering, cause we're, we're conducting a wedding. Now you really got trouble. It's a religious activity.
A- anyway, I'm sorry to muddy the water on, on everything, but I, I, I think that's, I, I think we should. For sure that we flesh out the difference between the recreational side of it. Because that's where I think we're having, having the issues, and that's where we should have been enforcing on out there. Is you don't have a CUP for recreation, cause that's in the recreation facility, that's in the code and, and, and.
Well, the other thing to your point, Jason, last time, the private road issue, cause this barn is on a private road, so. They're using a private road, and then you talked about the cabin and the private road, so. There needs to be some points on that one too, because these other three homes that are there, like, they're impacting my road and the quality of my road. Coming in, you know, if it rains or whatever else, so.
But is that something that we, we could handle in a CUP process? Cause that's what we look at, right, is, is access and roads and, and parking and, and nuisance.
Things that you can mitigate. You can still approve it, you, you can put some. And I think that's, that's, at least for me, through the couple of discussions we've had, that's really where that size came in there, cause. Right, the cabin up in the mountains, it's on a private road, it's a single cabin, you know, it, it might sleep ten people, right, the CUP. May not make sense there, but on a private road where you got three other homes and you're having all these. Whether they're special events or just housing thirty people for a night.
Yeah.
That requires the CUP, I think, and so.
And I think that scale can, can do that, and we could do that in a, in a short-term rental thing, but I, I just don't wanna lose sight of. We've got a code in place that we can deal with, with those. But there's, there's probably a level at which, and, and I don't know how you do that, it's number of bedrooms or, I mean, cause you could have, if people could. Could market something, I, I mean, if we say it's fifteen people, they're gonna mark it as fourteen people capacity.
I think some of that call may be coming, so at least, at least we're looking at them, right, we're gonna have a person in there once a year. Right, the fire marshal goes in and says, well, that's got eight bedrooms, and they said it only sleeps four people. Or, I, they could change that, but I think you see that, you could at least verify it on the, the rental websites, cause they advertise how many people can stay there. And if they start reducing that, right, they're gonna get less people staying there, so they're, they're not, we do need to find that, that sweet spot number to try to. Catch those, I think, which is, is hard to do.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if we go to page three, the bottom of page three? Seventeen oh seven, forty? So, I guess I'm just asking this a little confused. When we first started off, we're talking about accessory dwellings.
Is this outside of what we're discussing?
Uh, so it's part of the cleanup stuff that I referenced before.
Is this outside of what we're discussing?
It's outside of the short-term rental though, right?
No, it's, it's on, it's down on there.
I thought it was part of it.
Yep.
I mean, it could be part of it if the guest house or accessory dwelling unit were being rented as the short-term.
But I'm confused with the definition there, but regardless, as I read that, well, as I read the first literature and listened to our discussion. I'm thinking that I can have a detached building, but now we're restricting it to four hundred square feet, it's gotta be attached. To an existing building and they can't have a kitchen or a bathroom, or a kitchen or cooking facility.
Yeah, so if you go back to short-term rentals, um, well. I have a couple of examples that I'll, I'll share, that will make it hopefully clear, but the, so the short-term rental stuff. Is limited to the primary structure or an accessory dwelling unit or guest house, or any other portion of the residence. Um, anecdotally, there are a lot of these short-term rentals that are kind of maybe a camper out in the back, um. Different kind of, like a treehouse type of rental, uh, and in talking with the fire district and the deputy fire marshal, um. They don't want any language in this that would allow for any detached units. And what we have had in the past is people presenting guest houses that are either detached or part of an accessory structure. Uh, that get turned into short-term rentals and de facto detached accessory dwelling units, which. The fire district and public works is still not comfortable with, uh, as a safety.
Can't you, so, so they can't qualify as a, as a dwelling unit, uh. Can't you still have them detached, but then still not allow that, that kitchen facility in there? Cause that's probably their biggest.
Yeah, what happens probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the time is they present it without the kitchen facility. And then as soon as the CBO is issued, their kitchen gets installed.
Right, but, but so this one, they're not gonna get a CUP, but they're still gonna get a yearly inspection, so I don't see them pulling the, the oven out every year. For the fire inspection to come happen.
Well, and again, that's where, because people are occupying this on a commercial level, cause they're renting it out, that the fire district still isn't comfortable allowing. A short-term rental in a detached structure.
Well, we have two places right now where there is no kitchen, but they're bringing in these black, um, black. Stoves and everything else, the cooking, which is almost a worse fire hazard, they're saying.
Yeah.
Cause there's not an automatic off or anything else where it sits, but it's unregulated, so.
Yeah, and we, we still need to go through this more with fire sitting down, but um, just in anticipation of this discussion, I did talk with Jason and. Um, Troy, uh, yeah, Troy had men, Troy Frederickson, uh, had mentioned that he does see a lot of. Detached, short-term rental type things, um, but Jason was very adamant that they don't want anything in the short-term rental ordinance that would. Allow a de facto detached ADU.
So, just to.
Or detached short-term.
Just to muddy the waters even more, we probably wanna look at the agritourism code as well, because I believe that was allowed in.
Uh, it's allowed as, yeah, there is some overnight rentals.
There's some overnight.
It could be, it could be like one per unit or one per.
But I think it has to be part of the house too, but, cause I'm thinking of the one in Paradise, but yeah.
Just while she's pulling it up, correct me if I'm wrong. In my memory, one of the things that started this whole ball rolling was Keith Mickel with the, the wine operation. Saying that, hey, I need more housing for my workers onsite. And so we started, kinda started it then and we've rolled with it since, but. Well, we're not gonna allow them to be in a separate structure or have a kitchen. But then again, I guess this does come back to short-term rental, but.
Well, and then we've got the, the auxiliary dwelling unit code as well, and, and, and that, or, or accessory dwelling.
That's where I'm confused.
And, and that's, and that's, I guess, maybe would be my input is, is I think we need to kinda look holistically at this and say. If we've got, if we've got an ADU ordinance, um, it certainly needs to jive with, with a short-term rental. Uh, ordinance there as well as the agritourism, so everything, everything is congruent.
Well, and I, I know there's a couple in the county that are, that are detached, they don't have kitchens, that came in, and this has been years ago. Uh, probably before either of you might've been here, right, and the county said, yeah, if it doesn't have a kitchen, or we don't have a, we don't have a short-term rental ordinance, if it doesn't have a kitchen. Right, if it doesn't have those facilities, it's, it's allowed because we don't not allow it. And so now we're gonna tell them, nope, you can't do it anymore. So that's, with, with, with that detached, I know there's a number of them out there that. Someone did it without coming in, but some came in and were told, yep, you're good, cause you don't have a kitchen, you don't have a bath, you know, you don't have those things that would require permitting. And so they were allowed to do it because it's not allowed, and so I.
We're creating an enforcement nightmare as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Because people are gonna come in for an accessory dwelling like Keith Mickel originated with. And then they're gonna find a lapse in time, or they're gonna be open in July and realize, hey, I can get two fifty or four hundred a night. And, and now they're gonna use the same dwelling and then. I, I don't know, I just think we're creating a nightmare.
And his, his is tied to an agritourism one, right?
He never got approval for.
For the dwelling.
Yeah, for the ag structure, or, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that it could trigger and make a lot more.
Nolan, what's your thoughts?
I'm just sitting here and saying, does the number of nights, we said thirty or less here, so those that you're talking are greater than thirty, right?
ADUs, yeah.
An ADU could be year-round.
Exactly, so I'm wondering if the recreational slash short-term rental by the definition of thirty days or less, or maybe even. Less days, cause of the impact we're based on residential or whatever, is going to separate that from the ADUs.
But human instinct is gonna be, I got my ADU.
No, I can.
I can get a thousand a month out of it.
What I want.
With my guy living there year-round, but I can get three to five hundred a night. How you gonna enforce that? How you gonna enforce it and track it?
Just like everything else, nu- nuisance.
Well, I, I mean, I don't care if the county wants to do that, but I just see it as a disaster, cause people are gonna go where the money is.
And that's kinda where I go back to my original point of, you know, where have our, where have our challenge has been. It's been in those large ones and it's been recreational type facilities where we're having events. And, and my opinion, we need, we should focus on that and we should focus on enforcing the code that we have. Um, and, and deal with those, those situations. Is this, is this potentially an issue? Yeah, I think in the future it will probably be more so. I think currently, the issue is with recreational facilities, it's not. Short-term, short-term rentals per se.
Well, I think it'd blow our mind right now if we truly went around with the magnifying glass. I can think of, I can think of what I just. See on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Of, of an apartment in a shop. Or a detached old garage that they converted in, and the county told them twenty years ago when they built their house. You cannot use that as an accessory dwelling, but they're on eight, they're the Airbnb and they're, I mean, they're, they got people in and out of there, so.
Agreed.
Yeah, we saw the map. When we first started this like a year and a half ago, they did a map of every dot of every Airbnb or VRBO, all the different sites in the county and.
That's right.
There's a lot of them, and then most of them are in the cities, I mean, most of them, probably ninety-five percent of them were in incorporated cities, but there's, they're still scattered all over. And if we have that many hundreds and we get complaints on one, maybe Jason's right.
I, I mean, I hate to be the. The fly in the ointment on all of this.
Don't, don't over-regulate what's not a problem.
But I, well, I, I, I think my take on it is, is let's focus where. Our challenges really, really are, and if we, and if we have a code in place. And apparently we haven't used that to, to regulate the, the problems that we have had, in my mind, that's, that's where we, we really should go. Is let's enforce what we've. the, the problems that we have had, in my mind, that's, that's where we, we really should go, is let's enforce what we've got. Hey, you guys are running a recreational facility, you don't have a, you know, we don't even bring in the overnight part of it. It's, hey, you're, you're running a recreational facility here without a conditional use permit, permit.
We do get a lot of calls though about people wanting to do short-term rentals and what those requirements are and what we allow and don't allow, and because we don't have a code.
We don't allow any, or we don't have anything.
So let me ask you this.
So the code actually says if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
And does recreation become commercial? If they're charging a night and there's an ex, an amount that's above what a normal house would have, we're crossing into the commercial side somewhat, aren't we?
Any event center's gonna have to be commercial if it's in a city.
Yeah.
If they're doing weddings, if they're doing quinceañeras, if they're doing whatever.
Recreational facility, a place either indoor or outdoor, designed or equipped for the conduct of sports and leisure time activities that is operated by a business and or open to the general public. A recreational facility is, is operated for a period of greater than thirty days per year and may also include incidental short-term rental accommodations for up to fifteen, uh, fifteen rooms. Now, this is current, is that it, right, Angie?
Right, but that's all in one structure, uh, there's very specific requirements about that housing type, so, or that overnight stay. It's meant to be kind of a lodge, um.
Lodging.
Yeah. And then just going back to agritourism, yeah, overnight accommodation is permitted, uh, as follows. Guest rooms may be located within an owner-occupied dwelling or seasonal cabin that meets the minimum building and code, fire code standards, so.
No more than four guest rooms. No more than four guest rooms, occupancy of two per room.
So I'm definitely not trying to throw these people in the bus, but.
So is that something that should maybe be our guide over which?
Yeah, that could be part of the scaling or, um, limitations for occupancy for the short-term rental.
From what I see, the zone on that is still agriculture.
That's under the agritourism one?
Well, secondary building agriculture.
Sounds like we might have a few more meetings to discuss on this one before we're sending anything to the county council.
Yeah, definitely.
And I look at this, you know, we've got bed and breakfast in and short-term rental as two separate.
You got, you got an Airbnb and then you've got an event.
Is it owner-occupied, is that the?
That's the main difference with the bed and breakfast and, yeah, I mean, I think bed and breakfast was probably back in the day when that was the popular thing and now you don't ever really hear of bed and breakfasts anymore. I haven't processed one.
It's still a B and B, but they, you don't.
Yeah, it's an Airbnb.
You get a bed and breakfast, it's just not cooked by the host.
But it's owner-occupied is probably the main distinction between that and a short-term rental.
I think, uh, the bed and breakfast, doesn't it just refer to rooms to maybe not, um, like a, a unit with potential cooking facilities or anything?
And there's some of those, there's some people just rent out a bedroom in their house. They've got all.
Yeah, cause again, it just talks about guest rooms, four guest rooms max, um, but yeah, owner-occupied.
So is that maybe?
Yeah, they, they hold quite a few events.
Is that something, is that something that we could use? Maybe redefine bed and breakfast for the small? So at that point, uh, so a bed and breakfast still requires a CUP?
Yes.
A CUP, business license? Maybe that's something you could do, you could use that as, for those smaller scale rentals.
Define owner-occupied, the owner is there when the people come and staying there?
Yeah, I guess we don't have a. Yeah, a specific description, but yeah, that's.
For accessory dwelling, is the owner's gotta be onsite, whether it's the same owner or separate building, right?
Accessory in order, the primary.
Cause this one in Wellsville is not owner-occupied, it's owned by, but the owner lives in Ogden. That's half the problem is they don't see all the crap that's going on. So, it's owner, but he's not occupied it, so I'm trying to understand, what is our definition of owner-occupied?
Yeah, I think.
I was just looking, if there's, we have the bed and breakfast as a separate, a separate title in here. I was just wondering if there's a way that we could use that for, for the small scales?
Yeah.
And then, and then have. And then have a large-scale, short-term rental or something, I don't know what you define it as, but, um, at a certain point. Because a bed and breakfast, they would, they would still require a fire inspection? Is that part, or is that be part of the CUP?
I think it'd be part of the CUP and the business license, so most business licenses require either a self-inspect or the fire department to go out, so.
Don't put two onion problems on the same night, solar and short-term rental.
We thought with everything else that we would have time, yeah, exactly.
It's supposed to be short meeting, I'm getting disappointed.
Yes, yeah, there's still more sandwiches in the fridge, so, yeah. But yeah, um, we can look into some more of those scaling items. I just quickly, just for kicks and giggles, so you know why I, I included the trying to rein in guest houses. The problem that we are having, and this is in your shared document, um, is we have somebody, for instance, who came in with a addition to a house. So you can see that this is the existing garage, existing residence. Uh, they're adding an additional two-car garage, there's basically a hallway that connects. Um, and then everything about this addition, uh, says that it is a separate, single-family dwelling, uh, except for the fact that there's no fixed cooking facilities. They have left an open space where a stove would naturally go in this area that looks like a kitchen. I did recommend that we deny it through the zoning clearance process, cause to me it is a separate, single-family home that could be easily, uh, you know, uh, what's the word?
Split off.
Split off, thank you, or at least closed off from the existing home. Uh, and then, yeah, just the way they've labeled everything, you know, primary suite, they have a butler pantry, but if there's no technical kitchen, well, you need a butler pantry. Uh, so in this instance, um, applicant is going to go back and basically relabel everything so they can call it a guest house. But if you look at this and then you look at the elevations, uh.
How big of a lot was this sitting on or acreage?
Ten to eighteen acres, something like that. Why, why is this not a?
Did you say we shared that on ADU?
Yeah, it's in a short.
Cause it doesn't have a stove. That's, that's. But why would they, why would they not pursue an ADU?
Uh, well, this doesn't meet the attached ADU, uh, there's limitations as to size, um, it's a twelve-hundred square feet, um.
We throw a stove and a furnace in the same category though, cause both are using gas.
Well, again, the definition is about, uh, fixed cooking facilities. Kitchen or a set of fixed.
That's where the fire became concerned, right?
Uh, well, in this situation, it's just.
I've had three homes that I've known that burned because somebody parked close too close to furnace, which is a lot easier than somebody burning themselves with a stove.
Yeah, and then here is the elevation, which again, looks like two, single-family homes.
Well, back to, once again, kinda the whole reason, well, or one of the reasons that we even started down this direction, I'll be quick. Affordable housing, a shortage of housing, trying to make, you know, whether it's an employer or whatever else, trying to help people. I, I sincerely want us to help people, but as I said before, I just think if we don't tie all this together, we're creating a can of worms.
But, State of Utah did a study on the short-term rentals and the housing. Rentals are making more money than housing is, and so, what is it? The Kim Gardner Institute's eighty-two or eighty-five percent of what is being built is going to short-term rentals rather than to meeting housing crisis?
But, but Nolan, that's the point I'm making and I think you know it as well. People are gonna give you lip-surface, whatever you wanna hear, there's not gonna be a septic in here, there's not gonna be nothing else. Well, the septic's already in and it's already got the pipes in for the gas and the wiring. The minute the inspector's gone, it's in and they're doing exactly what you just said. So, why not work with them so that we're aware of it?
But if we put it in as an ordinance and the neighbors report it, then we got teeth. And that's what's happening in Wellsville, we have no teeth.
Other than if you use the recreational facility.
Recreation facilities.
We, we could use that currently to start.
I agree with you, we will not catch, it's just like speeders, you know, speeders, some get caught, most of them don't. But if the nuisance factor, like Chris said, somebody reports it, we go in and then we can say, this is against ordinance, you're done. So, there's the thing that I look at, because I take so many calls, especially now that it's summer again and, and we can't do a flippin' thing, and, but yet if we had something like this, we could. And having it, because if I move into a neighborhood thinking I'm moving into a residence and then here comes fifteen cars and, and you talk about a noise factor, you get somebody out there with the bonfire at nighttime at eleven-thirty or whatever, it's a party and they got music and everything else and you got, it's worse than a tractor baler, almost a gravel pit going on, cause it's so close to a home, the other home, so. I, you guys are all bringing up good points and it's something we need to look at, because if we put it in there, then it may restrict us or open things up, I don't know, but I just want something so that if somebody's abusing it and a law-abiding citizen reports it, then we can go in there and say, yeah, you're right, this is beyond what we want here.
And I think we all agree that we need, we need that ability to, to do that, I guess it's just the, how to get to that, to that point.
And your point, an enforcement nightmare, but since this commission, we've put in an enforcement officer in the county.
And I think he would say that it's currently an enforcement nightmare, cause he doesn't have any ability to do anything for that.
We're checking into that.
What do you have in common, Doreen? And tell, tell us what he's seeing, what he's dealing with.
I can invite him to the next one.
That would help, because we're probably not thinking of all the things he's seen out there and, and you bring up the point. I'm ticked that he goes out and does stuff, but he's not got a bite and the council's looking into that.
Yeah, and that would be in conjunction with some additional civil penalties that we could enforce as well, that we've been working on, so.
I, I just think of, I, I've, know a lot of people's homes that they have multiple kitchens in their homes and it, it was not as an auxiliary or an accessory dwelling unit, it was just, I know one person that. His wife, his wife is, has, um, celiac disease and, and she has her own kitchen. So there, there's no gluten in that kitchen at all and it's a totally, totally separate. The rest of the family cooks in this kitchen, but that's her kitchen and there's, and.
Yeah, and our code does allow for a second kitchen in a single-family home, as long as it doesn't, uh, become its own self-contained dwelling unit. But yeah, we do have that language in the, the code that allows that, so. And yeah, we do approve a lot of second kitchens and basements, um, and that, but this example I was giving is just, in my mind, it's a.
You're building a second house.
Yeah, it's a duplex essentially.
Yeah.
Very large one.
Angie, just one more question though, if that was, so, even if they ident, come in and identified it as an accessory dwelling, say my mother-in-law's gonna move in it, we wouldn't allow it?
It does not meet the current attached accessory dwelling unit requirement, so.
Well, and, but there, but there's an exception for family members though, right?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, um.
I think in the original language or the, the definition it was.
Yeah, so internal, we really don't have any regulations, cause that's a state thing where, you know, if it's internal, if it's in the basement or above the main level, uh, we don't have any authority to put restrictions on that. But attached, um, we do, uh, and it's about ensuring that it's a incidental and accessory to the primary dwelling unit. And so there's a size, uh, I think it's twenty, I forget the percentage, but there's a percentage up to a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet for an attached dwelling, thirty, uh, maybe, but, um, might be fifty, I think we changed it to fifty percent up to a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet. And then, um, yeah, it has to be connected by at least twenty linear feet of common living area. So, that, the intent of that was in the future, if somebody didn't want that attached dwelling unit, they wanted to open up the house. Versus being like on one side of the garage that's separate from the primary dwelling unit. But those are the two types of accessory dwelling units that were allowed now. And then detached is currently specifically prohibited.
And is that because of the fire concerns?
Yeah, it's, um, has to do with, yeah, how do we deal with water, how do we deal with septic? Um, additional trips on the road for public works concerns and how they calculate road classifications and improvements. And then, yeah, fire, um, you know, is, do we have like a minimum distance from the existing primary dwelling unit? Maximum distance, how do they identify whether it's actually burnt or something that's habitable for emergency response? So yeah, there's a, a number of issues around that, so. Yeah, if it is separate, do we?
At least on the Airbnb or the, the short-term rental ones where we need to have more discussion with them. I think a lot of that can be addressed through the business licensing aspect. Just knowing a lot of people, you know, you go to other places where you stayed and, right, a lot of them, they're not, they're not living quarters, so they wouldn't be accessory dwelling units.
Right, but your accessory dwelling unit could be a short-term rental.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, so that's why I think we need to have two, almost two separate ones for short-term rentals, what those requirements are as far as attached or detached. Yeah, and accessory dwelling units is, is what it currently is, really.
And there currently is some language in the draft, uh, short-term rentals that talks about needing to, the requirements for an attached or internal AD.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, yeah, that might be something we wanna modify and just have our own, own definition for short-term rentals so that it's, uh, yeah.
It'd be interesting too, if you would check with the Bay River Health and see what they say about occupancies and how that ties together.
Anything, anything to work on though.
Yeah.
Mostly, they only do it off number of bedrooms.
Beds, right.
And so occupancy really doesn't, they don't have anything. I've talked to them about that one, cause we've had questions and it's, they just go off numbers of bedrooms. Which, which you don't know, because yeah, this one out there has three bedrooms, but they might sleep thirty people.
Yeah, it's huge.
I know we've gone around and around on this and we need to close our meeting, but as far as, as far as giving you something to work on, I think. Cause I want, probably one of the major things that, that I thought on this is getting our code congruent from one to another. So, so agritourism, ADU and, and this as well. So we're, so we're speaking the same language on, on each one of those. And I think there's, I think we had an agreement that we looked at scales. That there's a, there's gonna be some sweet spot, whatever that is, number of bedrooms or, or occupancy one way or another at which we want, we would like to, to enforce more or like to permit more conditional use, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there has to be.
I think there should be a size where it kicks it into the conditional use permit for sure.
Yes, that's, that's golden, has that.
Seems like a lot of work for us, to have all those little ones come through for to get a conditional use permit. Uh, and we're not getting complaints on them.
A small one, if it could be a zoning clearance on, and a business license.
Zoning, yeah, and then when you hit a size, we've gotta decide what that is, I guess, number of bedrooms or whatever that is, but. That, that, or number of parking spots that are required for it, you know, some of that that kicks it in.
Kind of general guidance to.
I think that gets us in a better.
And like I said, I'll be setting up a formal meeting with fire district and public works and other interested entities to kind of, um, go over some more of their concerns and, uh, get that into the draft ordinance as well, so.
Brady was asking me to give my opinion and I, I, I'm, really didn't have any problems with the proposed language and stuff like that. I do, I, because I think the, I agree with the premise that we should have something in place so that we can enforce it, um, at some point, um, but yeah, I, I thought a lot of good points were made. August agenda?
Um, nothing too crazy, rezon, CUP, kind of standard. You know, it's gonna be slammed, there's gonna be twenty different applications, the meeting's gonna go eight hours.
Don't say, don't say that, we were close to not having a quorum tonight.
Nobody's showing up in August.
Yeah, we'll fix you, just the usual rezones and conditional.
Are we good, everybody?
I'm good, man.